Again, today is today. Today is the twenty first of, of twenty first of September twenty twenty. And we're here to discuss issues that bothers and affects us as Nigerians in Daspora. And one of some issue today in this time, it was critical issue in this time is the Edo election. And we thank God for the success. We also want to thank the organizers, Ainek, the police and everybody for giving us a thorough. Out election, Edo State election. So you're welcome. So in our, with the panelists today is honorable. Victor, okay, Victor is not here yet. Okay, but with us here to begin is Pastor Mike Opute, a former councillor of Lagos Apapa Local Government Area. Our personal assistant to Senator Moussa, Lagos Central. So Mr. Mike and.
Former PA.
Yes, former PA, sorry, former PA to District Senator Moussa, that's representing Lagos Central. So Mr. Mike, Pastor Mike, you're welcome. You're welcome. I know.
Thank you.
I know you are an APC chief tank and you have a lot to say. So let's.
Yeah.
Really. How has it been so far?
Well, first and foremost, we give God glory for a successful election. And APC as the party.
We, we've lost you. Put touch on Mike again.
You know, for second to the war when the peace accord was signed for the election.
Yeah.
And they stick to it. But the most important thing is that we give God the glory. And I want to thank. The commander in chief of Armed Forces, President. Muhammadu Bwari for making the election a very peaceful one. Because the expectation was that the APC were going to use the Frederick might. You know, seeing the huge presence of security.
Yes.
In the, in the states, but the president. Allowed the, the election to go, give make Ainek to totally. Take charge of the election, being an independent commission. In the nutshell, we, we thank God. I think there was no, yeah, we had a case of life lost. That alone is a, is a very good, it's a bonus. So to the Edo people and to Ainek and to the Nigerian police. So I want to say big congratulations to all Edo people. Like I always say, election is not a do or die affair. It's a game. There must be a winner and there will, there'll be a loser. But in, in election, only in Nigeria that I find out the. No election in Nigeria that don't end in court. But a lot of things happen in that election. Uh, Mr. Ma.
Yeah.
A lot of things happened in that election. And since yesterday, even before the announcement of the result. I've been making my own findings, doing my consultation with leaders of the party.
Yes.
You know, they are giving me information, you know, even while the election was going on, a lot of things was wrong. In house within the, within the party.
Is that true?
Yes, you know, there's, there is this parable in Yoruba that says. Togunle uba bani, today oley bani.
Very.
If, if the, the, the insider. Yeah. Doesn't kill you in your, inside your house, didn't kill you. Eh, the outside one cannot kill you because for you to be affected, there must be an insider. But I come to realize, Mr. Massive, that the whole election is not all about. The state election. All this thing you are seeing happening now in Nigeria is about twenty twenty three.
Okay.
The whole thing is just all about twenty twenty three, not about Shumole, not about Godwin, not about Isaiah Mu. Everything happening now, you, you record that. Edo State election is the first election where you have governors present in a state just to conduct one election. Governors of different state present in a state where election is being conducted.
Yes.
So you will see that there's a force behind that election.
There's a force.
You understand? So it's be, the election is beyond the state. And after the election, as I'm talking to you, a lot of thing is still going on. A lot is still going, really going on, consultation and everything. You know, like I told you, Edo people have, they have voted. But the AP Court and Supreme Court has not voted. So, and since we, in the federal. Federal government has said, all election petitions there or sued in court should not exceed more than six months. So let's put our, our finger across.
Okay.
You know, and see what happened between now and February next year.
Okay.
That's all I can say for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Honorable. Honorable is, is a very serious issue. Yeah. But one, one interesting thing is. Edo stands as a very, very important state in Nigeria.
Yes, he admits.
Yes, anything that goes wrong in Edo affects Nigeria. Anything that also goes right in Edo makes, brings a change in Nigeria. So this election, to be honest with you, from my, my own research and discussions and what. The, what we, the, the files they sent to us. Because I, I also connect channels, channels TV. So with what I'm saying, um, it looks as if it was smooth and fair to an extent. It looks as if.
Yes.
Um, there were some, there were some. Good, um, some good conduct. People conducted their level well. Yes, you, you wanted.
Well. Yes, I, I would say, you know, when it comes to, to, to the media.
Yeah.
Uh, covering election.
Yeah.
In politics, let me tell you one thing, the media can cover a lot of thing.
Yes.
With the power of money. And the politicians themselves can make the media to see what they want to see. I can make the media to write whatever they want to write. Do you understand? So we have a freedom of speech and the media still have a very long way to go. Let me tell you, Mr. Massive Ma.
Yes.
You see, the, the APC in Edo States. You know, there was this so much focus that APC was going to rig, APC was going to do this. It was, it was going to cause chaos, we're going to fight. You know, the first of all, the upper of the knee called both parties to make peace. Then the organization or National Reserve for Peace Commission also came to be Edo States. And call on the aspirant led by a former president Abdul Salam Abubakar. You know, and they all signed a peace accord. And there's a message that came from our national headquarters, which is APC and from the national chairman. That while the election is going on, nobody, no APC member. To post any unit or any word result, we should all maintain. Uh, our, our calmness and wait for Ainek.
Official results.
Official results.
Okay, sorry, sorry, Honorable, let, let me cut it because we are having people, friends and stakeholders joining us. So, so that we can be, we can all carry ourselves along. So I want to welcome my assistant from France. My assistant is there, Mr. Truma. Mr. Truma is coming in from France. Mr. Truma, you're welcome, Honorable.
Thank you very much.
Also, he's a very great friend and Edo citizen and a great man here, a musical genius. Here in Milan and that's my very good friend Felix. Felix, you're welcome. Felix, okay, open your mic, open your.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good.
It's a pleasure of being among you.
Thank you. Thank you. So you're all welcome. More people will be joining. I've done the sense of message that they are on their way. So we are discussing Edo states. We're discussing the just concluded election.
Yeah.
And we are discussing every other thing that affects us. Now, what we say here is that we Nigerians in the diaspora make up a very powerful force. It back home. So whatever happens to our country affects us. Also, whatever happens to us here affects our country. Because like last year's survey says, Nigerians in the diaspora in Italy, let me be precise. In two thousand and eighteen, Nigerians in Italy remitted five billion dollars to Nigeria. So that, what that means is the Nigerian diaspora are very, 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 very significant. Factor to Nigeria as a country. So discussing and rubbing minds at times like this matters. Because we, we can't just say, no, it doesn't concern us. It doesn't concern us, it has been the game we have been playing for years. That's why our country is going down. So if we all stakeholders, diasporans and all of us could begin to have eyes in what happens in our country. We begin to put our eyes and put our ears and follow up, believe me, there will be a change. So I appreciate your presence and I hope we all join in the discussion. So, um, Honorable Truma, go ahead. You want to say something?
Um, I want to say good evening to everybody. And then I thank you for coming back once more. Let us discuss of a positive something that has happened in our nation.
Yes.
I must say, I am so happy with the outcome of the election. Happy in the sense that the people came out and said, this is what we want. And their voices were heard. What they wanted was what they got. So we can see that, we can actually say, let there be a new phase. In elections in Nigeria and it will come to pass. Everybody stood, people went out, went to the polling booths, stood down, stood there. To see that all they wanted and all they voted was what they got. They never, they never for anybody to carry the vote out. Or to give them a wrong figure. They saw, they took the whole thing and followed up. And Ainek is commendable. I commend them because they know. They know that we have come of age and they allowed everything to work the way it's supposed to be. They allowed their internet to work, the results were transmitted as at when due. So open and so transparent that people saw it coming. There were flaws later, but at least the positive side that we can, I can say this. In this election. In as much as we are human beings, we cannot give everybody hundred percent, but they have tried, they have reached seventy percent is something good. So we saw so many videos about some people trying to practice some my practice, trying to perpetrate some my practices, my, my. My practices. Those who went to the polling booth with money and whatever. Edo just made a big statement saying that we can no longer sell our future. And I love that. I wish Nigeria would take, you know, follow that, that step.
Yes.
We can no longer sell our food.
Nigeria, Nigeria will take that step because Edo state, like we all know, is a very significant state in that country. It had been. Now, if it can happen in Edo, it will, it will spread, it will, a rebound will spread around Nigeria. We will be going to the Ondo State's election next week. And I know they've seen what has happened and probably Edo, Ondo State will replicate what has happened. Mr. Felix, what, what do you say, Honorable? What do you want to say about this?
Yeah, thank you very much for having me and I want to say good evening to everyone. You know, is, in fact, since on Sunday, I've been so happy because I begin to. I feel the hope I have lost before, I begin to get it back again.
Hey.
You know, you, you know, there's a saying that I used to say, reasonable human being after a day job has to go home. So we are all here, most of us, most of us are here in Europe or outside the country. After our day job, we have to return back home. So whatever is happening there, it has to be our concern. You know, the election that happened in Edo State actually, you know, I believe that. One day revolution will happen in that country. The revolution that started, you know, for the people to stand and say, yes, this is what we want. It is not all about the party. If you look at it like what I see, it's not just all about the party, you know, APC, PDP, whatever party it is. There might be good people inside all this party. But if they don't have an opportunity to walk, there is no way you can see their goodness. That is what was happening to Obaseki. But the Edo people stood and they said, no, this time around, we will not allow anything to happen to this man. It is not about the party. But they decided for their self that this is what they want. And I believe Nigeria, one day, everyone in Nigeria, we are going to stand to say, this is what we want in our country. We have endured this suffering for a very long time. The revolution have started. So let everyone just start to working on our own. Bro, I'm so happy for what you are doing. You know, there is an enlightenment. Thank God, the election that happened, these people, they have thought they are still working with analog. The people they, they contested with their digital brains. You know, they are digital brains. Everything was being transmitted digitally. So there was no way they could do anything. There was no way they could rig the election.
Okay, thank you so much, Honorable. But do you know that there is some pastor with us that thinks otherwise? Pastor Michael Opute, do you want to give your take? He, he is saying something totally different. So let's.
Yes.
Our man.
Uh, well, they have spoken well and everybody is entitled to his opinion. And like I'll tell you, I have been and I will continue to be a politician in the field. In the cherry parts and the media part. So there's no aspects of politics I have not been there in person. I have been a supporter, I have been an aspirant, I have contested, I have won and I have lost elections. So what I'm trying to say is this, you see in Edo election. You ask the question that the media covered a lot of things. Let me tell you, Mr. Ma. There's what we call, that's what we call acting reports in politics. Everything you saw on video yesterday was because of a, a PDP was scared. That APC were going to, to win. So by the end, the results are announced, people are APC. They will say, why the election was going on, who were reporting, people that were sharing money, they were acting money. Let me tell you. In politics, common sense, we tell you, somebody that is going to share distribute money. In a, in a, in a polling, in a polling booth where they are voting, we will not go alone. We will not go alone. There will be backup in politics, anything happen. You understand? But all the videos you are seeing where PDP will catch somebody, they are see that, they will be just like what, what, what the same thing, what the government did during the COVID nineteen. But they will go and put somebody in the hospital telling there you have COVID nineteen. All those are acting political reports. Real political, bully political reports. You will see, you will, you will see that. You will not able to see people. It will be very rough. Forget all those videos you saw on social media. That's like I will tell you, for example now. Let us take the, let me, let's take the result of Oredu. For example, I have sat down and we are still studying the, the, the result of the election. Let me tell you. I would not say PDP wins. I would not say they will not win, but most important thing that I noticed in that election, no life was lost. So I am happy with my people back at home and the result for now, it's, for now. They, they have accepted it, but it will not end there. Like I told you, there's no election in Nigeria. That AP Court or Supreme Court will not vote. So the citizens that have voted. So it's not, we are now waiting for the vote of AP Court and Supreme Court. But if you tell me the election was peaceful, fine, yes, it was peaceful. Say it was fair, no. Because Oredo local government, they have for three thousand. So we, we also have seen video. Because I told you that in our national team, I said, nobody should post video on this day. So we have seen video. Where PDP were pressing ballot papers. You understand? We have seen video. So we let's leave everything the way it is, but I am happy with the, with the outcome of the election. And if you ask me to rate, uh, uh, what do you call Ainek, I will give the Ainek at least forty percent. And this is good. They're come to say about our governor, as I'm talking to you now. A lot of positivity is going to see there's politics inside politics. That's what a lot of men of us, we don't understand. Don't be surprised tomorrow, you will find Obaseki back in APC. It's possible. Are you hearing me? It's possible. That's why, that's why I tell you, there's politics inside politics. Now, you see, never, don't forget, they're scared of foistri against Obaseki about his A level result. Which opti today, he has not proven, which APC are not taking on. Who brought this case up? It was PDP. PDP exposed this secret. When Obaseki was in APC, he will have lost the, the, the governorship in court. But the luck we had there when it was the APC was that PDP five out of time. But now APC had five on time, even before the, the, the election. That is why, even during the debate, Pastor Saya Zeriam told him, we are not saying you do not graduate from the university. But how come you got an admission without, you know. Without the correct qualification in your A level. Where is your A level result? And the same result you use in APC. So the thing is this, that one is that if you look at bias today. What letter they are re, the, the, their election from APC to PDP, from PDP now, they are going to have a run election. It's because of foistri certificate. So now, PDP are enjoying it. Let them enjoy it while it lasts. But at when it will turn around, you will see, you see chaos, trials and everything. No. So take it the way it is. So for now, let us enjoy the results. Why, why it lasted? Because Oredo result, we have seen a massive, a massive result. We look at the video of all the, when I said video, not our own video. We are talking of media video, TVC video, channels video, NTA videos. If you look at where all these elections were even here, the whole capacity of Obusegiom is fifty thousand. You understand me? Put all together, all the people that, that came out, I call. So there are a lot of things I don't want to say to me that because we have been warned in the, in the, from the national headquarters. Just keep our calm. So keep to that. That's all I can say for now.
It, no, it's interesting. It's always good to have two sides of the coin in every situation. Life itself always presents positive, negative, light, darkness, good, bad, you know, so.
Exactly.
What is happening is good. I, I'm happy you're also here to speak for the APC and to speak your, your own mind and your, your part in it. So, um, Honorable Felix, you've had what Michael Opute is saying, that is an APC man from Edo State also. One time councillor and he's speaking also not just as a lame man, but as somebody in the field. Because he was once a councillor also. So what will you say to what he said? You being an Edo Indian and a, a strong supporter of PDP?
No, I'm not, I'm not a strong supporter of PDP.
Okay.
I supported Obaseki.
Obaseki.
I'm not, I'm not a party man, you know, wanting, what there's one thing I want, you know, with Nigerians, especially in politics. It's not all about the party. It should be all about the people. It has to be about the people. You know, like, everyone is entitled to his opinion, you know, definitely in a race, there must be a winner, there must be a loser. The ability for everyone of us to, you know, to concede, you know, everyone is free. If you want to challenge, anybody that wants to challenge can challenge. Maybe at the end, the court is needed to be, to decide about it, deciding. But one thing about our Nigerian politics, must the court always be the one to decide for us? Must the court continue to decide? It has been happening over and over and over.
That's a very good question.
You understand? It, it, it has to be, by now, look at what is happening here, you know, where we are. Election will be holding. Yesterday, there was an election.
An election in need.
But I will say, people were moving around. You don't see so there, you don't see anything. Anything is going on. At times, there will be an election, you'll be going to work, you don't even know that something is happening. That is what we are supposed to be passing now. That is what we are supposed to be doing now. You know, it's, it's somehow disgusting that every time the thing has to end in the court. The court has other matters to settle. It shouldn't be election matters.
Because the, because the opponent, Nigeria, our, our, every time we are in tussle.
Yeah.
Friends want to agree to losing. Everybody wants to win. That's the problem with.
Yeah, because, because from the outset, every one of us is, we just want to win by all means.
Yes.
So it has not become a, a norm to every, every one of them. So if they don't win, they have to go to the court.
Yes, that, that, that's, that's the situation. Honorable Truma, you're hearing the two takes from the two sides. And it is, what, what I saw yesterday anyway, from the files that were sent to me from channels. My people in China, what I saw yesterday was to an extent, a very porous and very clear election. The, the people spoke, the people were in, the, the majority. Yeah, came out and the majority spoke their mind and the majority picked Godwin Obaseki. Yes, there are things hidden. Yeah, obviously, nothing like that will just go like that. It obviously there will be cases, there will be abnormalities and occurrences. But what, what do we say about that, Honorable Truma? What, what do you observe?
Well, so many things were, we saw so many things, we observed so many things, but I must say. Like Honorable Felix said, so also said that they.
Your network.
If I, if I am to come to. First of all, the president has already. First of all, the president has already said that this is a free and fair election. He has commended the actions, the way it went.
Yes.
I still stand on the same notion that eh it was a very fair election because there was no bloodshed. There was no violence. Even the police that came around, there wasn't shooting, there weren't intimidations and other things. From what we saw on the media, which means that the people spoke their mind. But if we are to go to the level of saying the court has not eh, they have not spoken, they have not voted. Does it mean that after all said and done, a few, let few, we differentiate the whole nation or the whole state?
Those days.
Which is nice.
That's a strange question.
So. I believe the way our people see.
Honorable Truma, your your network.
Are you getting me now?
Yes, your network is unstable.
Ah yeah, I'm trying to go to the um to the laptop, but it's a little bit eh, it's hanging, I don't know what is the problem with this PC, but it's coming.
Okay, I I want, why you're checking your network, I will go further. Now, it is obvious, let's just say eh Godwin, Governor, Governor Obaseki has has won. Even though like eh we are saying now, there there still has to be some announcement, some official announcement. But INEC has given their own announcement and we have taken it. Now the next stage is moving forward. Edo State is a very massive state, Edo State is a very, very sensitive state also. So now we want to begin the moving forward agenda. That's that's thing that affects all of us, regardless of party, regardless of um our sentiments or opinion. The main thing is we want good life for our people, we want good life for our our families in Edo State. We want good life also to rub all over all people that concerns us here in Africa, in Nigeria. So what are the steps to moving forward? What will you suggest if you're given an opportunity to speak with Governor Godwin Obaseki now? Eh eh Honorable Felix, what will you suggest to him as is steps, as steps to bringing a change to Edo States? This question goes to everybody, please, eh yes.
As you have asked, as you have asked, I will say eh Governor Obaseki have seen how the the Edo people stood for him.
Yes.
If at all, he was not having eh an intention to do something better or to make changes in eh eh in Edo State. At least he saw how the people stood for him, how a lot of people abandoned their own party just for him, just for his sake. So he should be able to drag the Edo to a a particular place whereby everyone, everyone of us will say, yes, we have arrived to a particular place. He should make a change, there are things, if there are things that he has not done well in the last four years. He should be able to rectify those things by now. So by my, I think that is just all I just want to tell him. He should make eh eh kind of eh look at everything that he has done before, what he has not done well.
Very good, thank you very much. Before we go further, I please also announce that we have a comrade with us from the UK. That's our comrade Jolly, a political analyst and eh a PDP CTA. Comrade, you're welcome, sir, open your phone, open your phone and join the discussion.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you very much, Mark. So nice to be back here, I appreciate you all eh. Congratulations to the good people of Edo States.
Great.
Congratulations to all Nigerian progressives and a congratulations to President Buhari. Security Forces and INEC for conducting a very free, fair and transparent elections. This is the win-win for everyone eh and i- 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 it is a testament to the growing taste of Nigerian democracy. I will never have it so good, all I can say is that eh Governor Obaseki should reschedule his gesture. By massively turning the better dividend this time around. We all are aware of the situation, all the godfathers did to him, eh thankfully, we've been able to help him out. There isn't anyone around now that will be holding him back, so he's all got all the good reasons to be happy. And we're the poor happy, and you you would have noticed as demonstrated at the post, that eh the citizens took it upon themselves. To ensure victory for democratic ethos. And eh we expect, and expectations are high, that Governor Gordon Obaseki is not going to let the good people of Edo State down. Elections are over, no acrimony, no animosity towards anyone, we just need to unite and move Edo State forward.
Wonderful, but Comrade Jolly, eh eh there are still small acrimony, there are still small animosity. I'm a, I must tell you, um with us here is eh Pastor Mike Opute. And eh we we both started the discussion earlier, eh he doesn't agree that there is no acrimony. He doesn't agree also that eh it was free and fair. Honorable eh Mike Opute, can you please come back again since eh the crowd is becoming heavier? Let's hear Honorable Mike, please.
Yes, eh thank you and eh I welcome you, the comrade from eh UK. And eh going back to responding to what you just said, let me correct this eh impression. There has never been godfather. When Obaseki was in APC, let us get that impression. You see like what I said the last, I said in politics, what you call, you know, painting and acting. I see it's real, you understand? As a politician, eh Mister Mark, if I want to begin to, to make you look as if you are a media man. To make you feel as if you are against a present administration, I can, I can, I can do it. Then you will be on the defensive side, but you are not. So all these, all these things happen in politics, you understand me? So coming back, your your question is how to move eh Edo State eh forward? You see, I have personal relationship with eh our governor, the excellency. Because I still remain the Edo ambassador on eh human trafficking and eh. So so far so good, you, I remember one of his interviews, I say he commanded me myself for what I've been doing here in eh Italy on human trafficking. You see, the governor, personally, I am not in against him. But in politics, they go call the supremacy, the party is supreme. There's no you without the party in politics, I want us to get that. So it's not, it's not godfather reason. Now, to move Edo State forward, I I let me first of all respond to what eh Honorable Felix asked. He said most our elections always end in courts. Why will a group of people in the name of lawyer or judges, you know, validate? Or they do know the decision of the masses, honestly, that is wrong, that is very, very wrong. You know, I I am not happy that every election in eh in Nigeria ends in courts. Every election must go to court, you know, now. Governor Obaseki, if let eh now that he are, for now, that is the winner. Our, I know his person, I know his kind of person, he's going to carry everybody, everybody along. He will want everybody to join and eh let the state move forward. And I am happy the both eh the two contender, they've been, right, they're contesting, they've related to themselves as brothers. So if at the end, let that relationship see continue, I want to see a better Edo State. Don't come up today and say eh eh you were against me, you were against me. Say, Mark, let me tell you, the problem is not going to be the governor. The problem of Edo State now is going to be on individual, ah governor, this is a lot they will talk so, eh governor, that I know they will talk so. He just said it's a battle so, he did video battle so, he did, you know, people that will, that will have idea, because you did not support them. And you, that be, your idea will not be relevant in politics. So we should end all that and move the state forward in unity. Even yeah, yeah, we would have, we are in the aspect, we see, I have the same problem, we have the same problem. Okay, let me use for, let me use our eh ambassador here in Italy, for example, he's a less eh ambassador, he's a uh Jordan. No, this is a man that is trying every day, when he, when he sits in his office, I told him, even in his car, he thinks. How can I improve the lives of Nigeria? But there are still some, some people that still want to make things difficult for themselves, not for the man, not for the ambassador. Take it or leave it, this present, and so this present ambassador has moved, changed the face of Nigerians to an extent. In Italy, yeah, he has related, he has related Nigerians like father and children. There's this father and children relationship between us and the ambassador, not just me. Every Nigerians will tell you, that's how, that's the quality of a leader.
Honorable, please, eh we're going to see a shot, just a one minute eh video of eh the um governor speaking. I want us to just listen to this while we continue. Can can you hear the, can you hear?
No, no, no voice, no voice.
The sound, no voice.
Oh okay, sorry, let me, let me, let me stop you, I'm sorry for that. Is um is a comment he was making actually to um the press on how he doesn't have power. Under the godfather reason eh ideology of eh Edo State. How his eh initial tenure, he couldn't do much because he doesn't have that power. Now, it is something I want us to discuss about, because we're talking politics tonight. I want us to discuss about godfather reason, godfather reason. Most politics in Nigeria be because one man, one Baba that is strong. Can put this younger man on beneath and still control that younger man. Why must our politics be in that nature, that is where I want us to go to. So um I'm opening that with um Honorable Truma, can you please open your phone?
Okay, thank you once more, I'm back on, I'm back now. Now we talk about godfather reason, I always know right from onset. I've always heard about a king and kingmakers. I know about that.
Okay.
But I've never heard about an, you know, eh a single kingmaker, no. There are so many, but you don't make a king to cripple him. You make a king and empower the king to walk, that is the problem we have in Nigerian election, Nigerian politics. The first thing we need to talk about is, are we going to sell or are we going to be sold? This is a question we need to understand and we need to clear in our politics. Everybody that enters into politics believes he's to be served, but he went down there to go and sell. You have money, you are given an allocation to better your constituency, you use it for yourself. You want to award contract those whose feel they put you there, the kingmakers. Now tell you that you give them this and you give them that, you will not walk. The nation will never go forward like that, we can never progress. I've never seen we are somebody will tie himself to a, you know, to a tree and still expect to advance.
Very good, thank you, let hold that, yes, let Honorable Jolly come in, I like what you just said, eh Truma. Honorable Jolly, can can you come step in, the the issue is godfather reason. The video I was about to play was the co- governor complaining. How he couldn't do anything as a governor because he was under the cover of eh some people.
Yeah, very well, yeah, very well, thank you very much eh Honorable Mark. I want to quickly disagree with my other comrade eh Pastor Mike, who actually tried to dismiss the prevalence of godfatherism in our politics. That is of course most stating the obvious, we understand eh the major reason why Comrade Adams Oshumole fell out with eh Gordon Obaseki. Eh was because of the fact that Governor Obaseki was governor and yet he could not act as a governor. The godfather has his own template of governors, the technocratic politician Obaseki disagree with that. His idea of governors was bringing governors to the populace, to the masses, providing them with the benefits of life. Providing good rules, creating justice, paid patients as at when you, but that was in the idea of eh of eh godfather Adams Oshumole. And that was why he deliberately denying the ticket of the second choice to come back and contest on that platform of the APC. I quite agree that there are rules that defines eh discipline and party coexistence. But in this case, you had an overbearing godfather who wanted what is for himself, like eh our last comrade spoke. It's all about the godfathers appropriating limited funds to themselves, execution of contracts. Most of the time sadly, these contracts are never executed. So what are we talking about here? Godfather exists in the politics in Nigeria, right from the local to the state and national level. And they are the major issues we are having in Nigerian politics. And that is why Edo people rules in solidarity that we want to define our future with our governor. We do not want to be ruled by someone behind the screen, I don't know if you're hearing me, are you hearing me at all?
Very well, very well.
So now, we have said, yes, we we said, we do not want to be ruled by someone outside the screen. We want to know who our leader is, thankfully, we've done this. And this is why I believe that the current governor, who has been giving in knowledge for another four years, will have no excuses. Because right now, he's has, he has eh a covenant with the people, not with the godfather. Initially, it was Adams at the background telling him what to do and what not to do, and that hindered the development of the states. And we recognize that, we agree with the governor that, yes, he is the governor and there's no reason why he should not be governor. Godfather is not good for politics, godfather hinders developments. I think it's an idea we should try get rid of, and if you go back, godfather is beyond Edo State, we know what's happening in Lagos. We don't know what's happening in other states of Nigeria where the godfathers, right? They decide who goes to the House of Assembly, they decide who local government chairman should be. Eternal democracy of every party have now sort of been broken by the, by by the heavy-handedness of the godfather. Instead of the godfather has his family or crony members, friends in the, in the position they wanted to be, or no one else have it. When was the last time you heard of a credible inter-party election where the people have to decide? Because we we live among ourselves, we know who we are, we know who is competent enough to represent and articulate our interests in a constituency. Eh this rights privileges have been taken away from us by the godfathers. All they do, they handpick, they write, and you have to be in their courts every day, court of loyalty, court of interest, selfishness. They just use their pen and write your name down and send it to INEC, without people on the street deciding who to present them. Most of us abroad or originally or actually would have loved to be major participants in elections. But you do not stand a chance, even when your people want it, because you are not in the group of the godfather. I am really surprised anybody want to deny the existence of such in our politics. They are very well, they are prevalent, they are vocal, and they are the one holding the developments of our people to hostage. And I can tell you, Edo is going to make progress more than ever before. Because we've broken whatever covenant existed with the godfathers and the political elites.
Wonderful.
That's what I can tell you for now.
Honorable Jolly, this one is spitting fire, this is great, spitting fire, thank you very much, Honorable Jolly. Um eh eh I I also want, but I would want to eh reason a little with my honorable Truma. Um yes, eh in back in the days, even biblically in the ancient days, there were kingmakers, really. There were eh older men that will i- i- install a younger man. But the thing is, what they they've abused that position of kingmaker.
Sorry.
Sorry, okay, they've abused that that position. Now the the kingmaker now becomes the kingmaker and also the leader in disguise. That this is what I think Honorable Truma is saying, the kingmaker now over here exaggerates that position of him placing. Because we remember there was a man, there is, there was a northern politician in Nigeria called Solomola. From the eh north side, Platoon, eh Pastor Mike, do you remember Solomola? Now Solomola.
Yes, 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 sure.
Solomola was a kingmaker, he installed uh, uh, Obasenjo. And if you look at it, he, then they understood that Godfather reason thing, or the kingmaker uh concept. Solomola didn't impose things on Obasenjo as much as he was the brain behind installing Obasenjo. He, at a point, relocated to the background and allowed the man to walk. So what Honorable Truma is actually saying is, the, the, the kingmaker will, has to be there. But this modern day politicians are exaggerating that position as kingmakers and becoming uh, uh, the lord over that person they have made. Let, let, let's hear from um, uh, Honorable Felix. Honorable Felix, what do you have to say on this?
Yeah, I wanna, I want to say thanks to my, my honorable colleagues, uh, they've been speaking very, very well.
Yes.
You see, Godfatherism, if you ask me, do we actually need Godfatherism? In every sphere in our, in our country, do we need them or we don't need them? At times, it is very, very important, we need them, at times we don't need them. But the problem is that there is an abuse in every sphere of life, it's just like a recommendation. If you look at what the dictionary says, you know, about Godfatherism, if you click Godfatherism, they will take you to Nigeria. They have, they take you to Nigeria for Godfatherism. And they say it is, it's a English and influential individual handpicks another often less influential candidate just to attain a leadership in order to es, look at what it, in order to assert authority or influence the phenomenon. If you get me, so Godfatherism in Nigeria, I don't think we actually need it. It, it needed to be script because it had been abused. Yes, one can make a recommendation, just like for example, what happened between Shorore and uh Kistimogalu during the, when Soinka, Wore Soinka and some other eminent personnel, they prefer to choose uh, uh, Kistimogalu. They study both of them, they knew Shorore is vibrant, Shorore is fearless. But they looked at Kistimogalu, that Mogalu is very, very intelligent, he has a lot of qualities. They decided to, to say, well, who prepared this guy? But it, it doesn't mean that maybe after that guy must have won, they will not be dictating for them, for him. That is what is happening in our own Godfatherism in Nigeria.
That's it, thank you very much, thank you very much, Honorable Felix. Uh, we, we are moving forward, we still have more people joining. Uh, I'm pleased to also announce that we have uh our own bishop from the south of Italy. That's uh Bishop Ferdinand. Bishop, you're welcome, can you hear me? Okay, put off your, uh, open your, your phone. Can you hear me? Okay, the bishop is not here, okay, anyway, you're welcome to the discussion. Uh, we are moving forward now, we say, um, election has been done so far, Inek has announced the winner. Uh, even though we, we still wait for some legal announcement also as Nigeria, as we know Nigeria to be. But we have seen our winner. Now, the question now is, way forward, way forward, Edo State has a lot to offer. Edo State is an, is a blessed state with so much mineral, natural resources. And uh, uh, Governor's second term, Governor Gordon's second term should be used to harness this, this gifts, this blessings that is in Edo State. So what do we say, um, Honorable Jolly? If you are with the governor now, what advice will you give him on where moving forward? Things to do to bring a change?
Yeah, uh, thank you very much, uh, Honorable Matt. I think uh what the governor needs to do right now is to consolidate on the gaze of the past. I agree, like you rightly said, if you know in our last program, we did agree the um abundance of mineral resources in Edo State. But again, uh, with the constitution of the federal republic is on the exclusive list. He cannot solely go about exploiting these rich mineral resources without recourse to Abuja. I will say that, there are other mineral resources or business engagement the governor could proceed with in terms of international collaboration, where he doesn't necessarily need the federal government approval. And uh, from what we can see, this is a governor that know his left from right. He has the idea, a former investment banker. That, this is why you see that in spite of the uh migrae revenue that accrue to Edo State from the federation account, this man has uh potentially, uh, you know, aggressively enhanced the revenue that accrue to the state. And uh, he can do more by way of going into partnership. Do not forget, it's his partnership, he, he, he has a ruthless streak of, that's why I laugh when Comrade Adams Oshomole asked me to be an MOU governor. That wasn't in a negative term, maybe he doesn't understand what it makes, what it takes to be an MOU. You see, this governor is going to now enhance that MOU reputation further by going into bilateral and international uh agreements with foreign companies to make sure that the mineral resources in Edo State are well diversified, utilized to enhance a progressive, progressive uh, uh, development of the states. Because that is just the way to go about governors. It has to be making shop, creating an environment for foreign companies to come in and invest and, you know, diversify the state economy. And in that process, it's not only bringing money to the states, it's also creating jobs for the Edo people. And it's also making business lucrative and created the necessary incentive for those of us in the diaspora to collaborate and ensure that will take Edo State to the next level. Do not forget the, the commencement of the Gili Gili port construction.
Yeah.
And if well and truly funded, uh, to a reasonable extent, this will have commerce, international trades coming over to Benissidi. And you can see that, you, you're just looking positive. All you can see in Edo State is we are on the up and this is not going back at all. So we cannot have wish for better thing than the unanimous and uh, we give to our work and seek governor. In fact, these are exciting moment as an Edo person and uh, I am taking of going back personally to go and take opportunities of the huge investments to avail myself of it and uh, try and help the government, make sure that things are better, not just for the Edo people at home, but equally for those of us in diaspora so that we can sort of internationally reconnect ourselves and repossess and position our state into the uh, the, the agriculture and other investment enhancement that is available to everyone in the world.
Thank you very much, that's a very good one. Uh, uh, Honorable, I'll put a, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Yes, um, leaving every sentiment and mercy, what will you advise the governor to do in the way forward?
Yeah, I've said, uh, I've said before that I have no personal uh, uh, misunderstanding with the governor because I'm still, take it or leave it. If I tell you something, you will be shocked, you will be very, very shocked. Do you know, up to date, I'm still under his payroll, it would still be as an APC member. That's to tell you the kind of person who is essentially Gordon Obaseki is. So we know what to take, what's, there's a clause uh, in the party constitution while he was in APC, eh? There is what we call party supremacy, talking about uh, uh, giving advice to the, to the governor. You see, the governor, to me, I will tell him to forget and leave all sentiment. Because when you're talking about God, when you ask what, let me first of all, keep it something better called Godfatherism. In politics, there's a difference between a Godfather and a dictator. Because mark my word, mark my word, this present administration, the governor is going to experience a lot of distractions, a lot of distractions from the PDP. If care are not taken, more than what he saw in APC, if actually there was one. As I said, like what Honorable Felix said, he said there are kingmakers, but you don't make a king to kill him. Yes, in politics, do what I see, you have a mentor, not a Godfather. Like me as a politician, I in Lagos state, I have a mentor, which is my senator. Now, he has passed on, then he handed me over to the uh President State Chairman as my mentor. It doesn't mean that it's my Godfather. Okay, in Nigeria now, if you are looking for a job, there's this city that said, if you don't know anybody, you can't get a job. Does it mean that person is your Godfather and getting that job? But let's get something correct here, somebody gave you a recommendation, go and meet with some person from me and telling that he must employ you. Does it mean that the person is, they are sending you to go and meet the administration? That if that person that gave you the note, the recommendation, is his Godfather? No, it is mentor. One way or the other, you have helped me in the past, now it's my turn to relocate the guest show. But does it mean that person is your Godfather? You understand? So let us get it straight, when you are saying a Godfather, a Godfather, a Godfather, yes. Find out if it is a Godfather or a dictator to that person. Now, back to the first one, my own advice to the governor is this, it should leave all sentiment. Forget all sentiment and let us unite, let us move the state forward. Maybe this Edo not be Lagos, that, that ideology is nonsense. If Edo State could have ten percent of what Lagos state have today, my dear, who will? My desire is Edo State to be like Lagos and be government on Lagos. What, what do you mean Edo not be Lagos? There's power, there's power in our town. Look at the business, the commerce, the everything, do you know the IGR of Lagos? Can Edo, that, that, that Edo State generate that? Telling me Edo State is not Lagos, that ideology is, is, is nonsense. I don't know what I mean by that, but my advice to the governor is that, bring everybody together. Move along because I know, I know it's a still very, very well. Just like the assignment of our commissioner that was arrested in Italy now. I'm the one in charge, I report to the commissioner directly, uh, the justice, I report to her directly. And uh, I want to get one thing straight, yeah, people just take away the, raise rumors, take news what they don't know anything about at all. That is why I, I love the, the governor for wanting, eh? That somebody said it, this governor is a, a Francis or the other, the other man. He said, it's not about the party, it's about the individuals. So it's about time we begin to look at things individually, you understand? If I'm protesting election now in Lagos, like me, my vote is not in Edo State. I've, I, I, I'm in Lagos state, I'm planning of to move my, my votes, I've applied to Inek. But on the other side, I said, I, I still have time to go to House of Assembly in Lagos. Let me, let me remain there, you know, people in my constituency, they look at me and said, it's not about, he's an Edo man. He was born and brought up in Lagos, but this impact, when he was PA and when he was councilor, the person of Pastor Mike, who Mike is, who Ifeoluwa is, matters a lot, let's give him another time. So there, I'm happy in my constituency, in my world, in my unit, my decision, see what an Edo man did when it was, so, so, when it was in this position. You that is Obama, you are not doing it. So the, the individuals matter, so I'll see one, the governor to maintain that to scope of carrying everybody along irrespective of blood tribe, religion and party, that's all.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, very eloquent. Um, we are moving forward, I, I would want to take much of our time.
Yeah, can I, can I briefly come in here?
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
Can I come here?
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, I thank Pastor Mike for his uh eloquent speech. And I think we should make a bit clarification here so that we do not get our viewers misled. Uh, I want to quickly and emphatically debunk his latest uh assertion about Edo not be Lagos. That's, if you understand that, the analogy and what led to that. Basically, Edo is not Lagos, it's not in the context of the eternally generated revenue. I agree, of course, Edo, Edo may wish to be like Lagos in terms of the IGR. Do not forget, there's no basis for such comparison because Lagos is a former federal capital. So most of the revenue that accrue to Lagos today is based on the benefit they had. And we also, our money is right in Lagos uh case. But what Pastor Mike is not telling everyone is the truth behind the analogy or comparison, Edo City not be Lagos. You know, in one bread, he denies the existence of Godfatherism in the policy. In another bread, he's trying to allude to the existence of a, a mentor. These are different things, we all know who a mentor is and who a Godfather is. Edo not be in Lego is a political analogy to divorce the, the disangle of the Godfather in Lagos politics from Edo State. They were becoming similar and peculiar. You have a Godfather in Lagos in the person of Bolat Tinubu, who decide in his bedroom, who goes to, to, to Alausa? Who decides who the Alausa man appoints as his commissioner? Who decides who go to the local government? Who decide who, who, who should be Lagos state nominee as the ministerial federal level? The same thing Oshomole was doing in Edo State. He single-handedly decided Abode has not met his personal desire and as a result, he will not get a second term ticket. Now, look at the peculiarity, it's why Edo people came out to say, this cannot be Lagos. There was a precedent, a very dangerous political precedent set by Bolat Tinubu in Lagos, which Adams Oshomole was tragically replicating Edo State. And we came out to say, we don't want that because our state is not Lagos. Lagos state politics is midwife, mother, after one man, Bolat Tinubu. Adams Oshomole appropriated the same responsibility to himself and wanted to be today like an emperor. He single-handedly decides who go to the House of Assembly in Edo State. He decide who the governor appoints as a commissioner. Then ultimately and most dangerously, he single-handedly took away the opportunity for Governor Obaseki to get a second term ticket. That was where the Edo people rose and what? Oh, because the guy did it in Lagos, you want to come and do it in, in Edo State? This is Edo State, this is not Lagos. That is where the analogy, Edo not be Lagos came in. We did not, we did not coin that word as a way to undermine or say we are not Lagos.
No, let us.
There should be no comparison in terms of economic prowess of these two states because they are different.
No, let us not turn this program to an argument, my honorable. What I'm trying to let you know here is this, that uh, what I mean that uh, about Godfatherism, talking about Bolamet Tinubu, let me tell you one thing. That man take it or you leave it, he has invested in human capacity and he has placed people up there. You know, Edo State, Lagos state is, the Lagos state is the only state you find an outside man in the House of Assembly. You find an Edo man in the House of Assembly as chairman of local government. You find an Igbo man as the chairman of a local government or Teteka or he carries everybody along. And that is why I said, there's, it depends on what you understand or the analogy you believe about Godfather. You understand? A man that has invested in human capacity, okay, do be, eh? Let's agree, so from there, you help your people, do come, don't say the team is not balanced. That's why, you see, this, this is they say in Lagos, they said, uh, Lagos is no mass land. But Lagosians as they come and say, it's their land, whether you like it or not. The, the, the man you just called, Bolamet Tinubu, is giving everybody the free hand. The friend, it depend on what you call about this Godfatherism. To me, eh, like what uh, Honorable Francis said, he said there are kingmaker, take it or leave it. But you don't make a king to kill the king. That is it. You said, uh, you, you, in the beginning, you made mention of what caused, uh, the cause, what causes the, the rift between Obaseki and Oshomole. But I remember in the meeting in the palace, eh, even the other commissioner said, what's really, what the really cause of your problem that you will fill out up to today, we don't know. Let two of them come and tell us if they still have the opportunity. We don't know, we are just assuming, eh, is this, is that? That's why I said, in politics, that's what you call painting it, assume this is how it is. So please, let us educate our people, let us move forward, we are one, we are one, let us move forward. I don't, I don't want to be, be politics of, eh, who is the Godfather or who is not the Godfather, thank you.
Thank you all very much. I, I, to an extent, I'm enjoying the, the, the talk back, talk, talk back. It's, it's opening our eyes, some of us that are probably don't know what is happening, we are learning and hearing. So um, thank you so much, uh, Honorable Jolly from the UK, thank you very much Pastor Mike. Um, we, we don't want to take much of your time, it was supposed to be an hour, thirty minutes uh talk show. That, that is, that will be aired all around and uh, we've just done that. Uh, finally, do anybody have anything to say to wrap up this? Yes, go ahead, go ahead, of course.
Before we close up, um, I know Felix wants to rush in, Felix, just a minute, please.
Felix, just a minute, please. I want to go towards the direction of, uh, Pastor Mike. Um, I'm not really happy with what you said, though I would say I'm shocked. You said that if somebody writes a letter, a recommendation and go, and gives you to go to an office and say, you must, your words, you must employ this person, that is not Godfatherism. To me, I don't even, I'm not even looking at the, the level of Godfatherism. What I'm looking at now is denying some qualified, you know, the right to serve. When you push somebody over the order to be employed where he or she is not more capable than others.
Thank you.
That is Godfatherism.
Thank you.
And that is what is killing Nigeria and that is corruption.
Absolutely.
Now, what I am saying is, we are growing, we want the best. Can we please face reality? I said this before and I'm still saying it again. All we are battling for, we will live here and go. Now for Governor Obaseki, I have this for him. His Excellency Sir, whatever you are, you know the truth. That from PDP to APC and APC to PDP, you are still Godwin Obaseki. It is like changing suits, wearing a abada and then wearing a kaftan. You are still the same person. When you were with, uh, Oshomole, you were behind him walking. Many have said that you were the brain behind his achievements. And now you have your free hands to work. Please, make sure you write your name on gold. Finish the projects you have started. Finish other projects that are there before you came in, not minding party. Finish them because whatever you do today will still come back to you when people will start talking about how you won, how they supported you and what you achieved.
Thank you very much.
Nigeria cannot be good if we don't consolidate on what is already on ground. Thank you.
That's a good one. Thank you. Go ahead, Honorable Felix.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone of you. You know, I, I actually want to say something concerning, uh, Edo not be Lagos that, uh, Honorable Mike, Pastor Mike was talking about. Uh, Comrade Jolly, I've already cleared it all. You know, but what I just want to do, what I just want to say, or like the advice I want to give to the governor, you know? I think, um, it is time for him to walk. It is time for him to walk. He shouldn't look at, you know, whatever has happened. As, uh, Pastor Mike said, there shouldn't be a sentiment. He should forget about sentiment. This one did, this one did not support me, let him walk, create an enabling environment. Even if, if, and there is an enabling environment, we in diaspora alone, if we come to invest in Edo State, I think.
Thank you.
Great. Talk less of the foreigners. So I, I just pray that he will be able to carry out this, uh, assignment so that the people will follow him up. That's my advice for him. We should create an enabling environment for everyone.
Thank you very much. That's a very good one. Honorable Mike, uh, a last submission, please.
Yes, I want to thank everybody in the program and most surely to thank you, Massimo for this, uh, wonderful opportunity and the governor delayed, the Edo people once more for a peaceful election. And my joy in the election is that there was no bloodshed, no life. I look forward for us to have this kind of discussion again. And, uh, congratulations to Nigerians and, uh, once more. But I wanted this opportunity to say a, a very big thank you to our ambassador in Italy. Yes, he absolutely issued Joga. And also, uh, say a special, uh, greeting to the National Union of Major Committee, the United President, Samson Hodge. I also greet you and I thank all delegates in the United, uh, just concluded Congress today, uh, on Saturday. So thank you so much and I'm happy and congratulations to every people. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Jolly, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much for, for the opportunity you've given me to be here again tonight. And I want to, uh, thank every participant here too for being here. Uh, my simple appeal to the government is to reiterate what our colleagues here have said tonight. There is a room for reconciliation, uh, and there is need for, uh, bringing the opposition on board, like, uh, being open to everyone. And thankfully, I can understand even those who did not support him on the election. I just read a statement from Kaftehosa, one of his major, uh, the billionaire who sponsored, uh, Isaiah Yamo. He has offered his congratulations and, uh, he has, uh, offers opportunity to help. The governor should not close his door on such people. Uh, people who have the innovative mind and, uh, 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 want to help the state, he should not close his door on anyone. His, his, his government should be inclusive. I do agree with that. Uh, Felix and, uh, uh, my other colleague have also said that. So, uh, I think Moses said it, that we should actually, uh, the governor should embrace, uh, inclusiveness going forward because at the end of the day, it is the development of Edo State that matter, not personal or tachation or anything with their rivals or anybody. I don't want to see a progressive state. Yesterday, there was reasons why he couldn't do that, but today is a new dawn and, uh, Edo people expect accelerated development now and no excuses at all. So I do expect the governor to do just what we want, inclusive government for all and let by go, by go and build and consolidate Edo State and prime it positionally to be in the state of taste in the country and make it a, a hub for foreign investment.
Wonderful. Everybody has been so impressive. Thank you all so much. Uh, let's listen to this. In two weeks' time, Nigeria will be sixty years old. Uh, we'll be having a webinar towards that in, uh, in middle, before then. And I want, if you, if you all permit me, to have the same panelists be in the discussion. Um, I, I'm partnering now with Channels, Channels TV Lagos. And, uh, every discussion here is being sent to them. So if you say yes, uh, I, I, you, I can have you all also present in that, uh, discussion. So thank you all very much. I wish everybody a wonderful new week as we continue in, uh, the celebration for God, Governor Obaseki's tenure. As we also pray, one thing we do, I don't know about you, but one thing he needs a lot now is our prayers. So let's back him up with our prayers. Let's ask that he has the right mind to do the right thing, the ability, the strength and all it takes to lead Edo State to the right direction. And like we say, anything for Edo affects the rest of us. So as it has started, so shall it continue. A new dawn in Nigeria has started and we thank you for this. Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you.
So I'll see you in, uh, a week and, uh, two days, a week from now, please.
All right, all right.
Get the invitation, share with your friends, share with your followers and come along with the discussions.
Okay, bye bye everyone.
Bye bye.
Thank you very much, guys. Good having you.
Right, right, right.